And I'll show you the new layout for Ford. Ford Avenue Extension that comes out to 112 and 108 in just a few minutes. Ben's running late.
There's Ben.
There's Ben, he's not that late.
Late by my standards, sorry. Parent teacher conference.
Oh, was that time, was that time already?
Well, and you don't want to leave early when they're telling you all those good things, right?
And others. No, they're all good.
So we're waiting on Kevin. I haven't heard from them, so I'm assuming. Let's see. Which one do you want to use? Let's see if it's sitting there.
He is doing well.
No plastic effects, just kind of going.
Yeah, he's like, especially with two things now.
Okay.
Interesting, there is a business control.
Yeah.
Pretty left turn there.
Some things do that to you.
Yeah.
So what's he majoring in?
A special ed.
Okay. What's the current extension, if he's driving, he will be a major?
He's down to softer side. Now, he's always had a lot of patience.
He's always been good with kids.
Yes.
Yeah.
We haven't had.
Well, and I think it's good, you know, there's not enough good male role models to, in school, in education, education system.
I don't think he'd have an issue, I mean, if I speak for that, but every male special ed teacher, that's, they'll get stuck in a classroom with those who tend to be violent. Because they can defend themselves, I guess. That's my concern for him. Is he a little, you know, maybe he won't get, I don't know, I could be making that up.
But, there's women that are.
Sure, no, don't worry about getting beat up, I'm just worried about getting the lesser of the, you know.
It's a whole.
Right, right.
Higher.
He'll be with the less performant as opposed to higher performing, possibly. Shouldn't be, you're not supposed to be there.
You know, and it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily performance, it's, because of.
Yeah, I don't know what the phrase.
Yeah, what?
Function.
Yeah.
There he is, I just seen two tips.
Sometimes, the more violent, the higher functioning, so it's not necessarily.
Yeah, it could be.
It doesn't have to do with bad experiences.
The colonniers over there, they're fast.
Sorry, I'm late.
It's a colonier. It's all right. Is there a traffic issue?
No, it's just I left work late.
Okay. Sorry, that was going to be my lead into the master street plan, you were supposed to say there was.
Yeah, that overpass on Hill was there.
I know, I know.
And everyone else would use it, and I can hit across on Spring Street.
Actually, and truly, it is being designed, and it is on a fast track to getting in this bond program. So, you know, that's going to make a, a big difference. One of the things that we just talked about at the end of the day, what does that do to Goodson, if we dump all that traffic out on Goodson?
It's a disaster already.
Well, I don't know, I mean, that's a question, I guess.
But we dump it out on Forty Street.
Is all that traffic going to that far east or not? Probably not, I would guess.
I don't know, I think it will be, and how do you tell that now?
You can almost dump it to Forty, I think.
I think you're going to lose a lot on Forty, then you lose some more on Goodson. And then they have a high school right in the middle of the existing road, so it doesn't continue on.
I'm not getting into that discussion, because that discussion's over and done. Okay, well, I talked with Brad this morning to kind of see where we are on all of the master street plan updates and the safe, the safe street policies and all that kind of stuff, and we're not really making a lot of major progress on that just yet. But, you know, long term, we, we need to have the master trail plan updated, and I think the trail committee's looking at it and trying to come up with some priorities for the master trail plan. And the other thing that we talked about is a need for an on-street bicycle plan, and we don't, we haven't even started working on that kind of stuff yet, so those things still have to be done. But we have some things on the master street plan, I think, that needs to be addressed now, and we'll talk about those a little bit, so we can go ahead and have a public hearing, get these things done that need to be done, and then move on with the other stuff. And maybe use the stuff that we got from tool design, the, all the cross-sections and all the information about bicycle facilities as guidelines or best management practices in the master street plan right now, until we kind of move it further. The presentation hasn't been made to the council, and I don't know when that's going to happen. So, so we started talking about the master street plan, and one of the changes that, that need to occur, looking at it, I think, east and west, we've done pretty well at creating the east-west corridors, I don't know, we talked a little bit about maybe county line becoming that minor collector between Huntsville and Waggonwill, might be something that, you know, if we're looking at projects in the future, is that one that we need to kind of step up a little bit more? I don't know. You do know that, or you may not be aware, the city council authorized the design work on the realignment of Park and Berry Street and Emma Street, that intersection realignment, and the Cobble and Park Street realignment. So that kind of gives us this north-south through here, to get you all the way up from Old Missouri to actually, you know, quite a ways down on that side. We need to put in the new updates for 265, where it doesn't, this, this section, the old section becomes a city street, and the new road needs to go through here as it, as it has been constructed. So we need to make that correction for sure, and this becomes a city street. They overlaid it, and I think the transfer's already happened because the work's been done. So this is now 265, and this is just over our road.
That's two lane up there, right?
Yeah, this, this portion is on two lane right here, and they just overlaid it, they didn't do anything else to it. So it would, I would assume it would become, you know, that, do we think it needs to be a minor collector, or should it just come back as a local street? Long-term wise, I don't know that we want to take it all the way back to a, to a local street, maybe a minor collector to help take some of the traffic off of 265, I don't know.
Because you also have, like, the school, and, I mean, you, I think you have too much.
Quite a bit of stuff out in here, yeah.
You have, plus, anybody, I mean, yeah, no, I would.
My, my recommendation would be to take it down to a minor collector, take it off as a principal arterial, because it's not a highway anymore, but leave it as a minor collector.
Yeah, I don't think it can be expanded much, and that was part of the reason why 265 came off, because of the water line.
It can never be widened enough for arterial street, that's for sure. It might could make it with a minor collector with three lanes, just to give a little turning, and it doesn't necessarily have to have the whole thing, like you said, where you're turning to go to the school and that kind of stuff, maybe those, I'm afraid if we take it off, we'll never have a chance of getting it widened any at all, so, so that's one that needs to be, to be changed. The others that are on the list is, now, Ford Avenue is being extended, and I'll show you what, I haven't, no. This is what this one looks like. So it's taking off from here, paralleling and going up this direction, going on the north side of, this is, the Commons is down here, that's its subdivision over there, and tying into 265 over here to give that access. Our master street plan now shows it going, oops, sorry, too far.
Going into the range of the Commons.
Yeah.
It didn't look favorable, it looked bad.
Yeah. Well, we had it going north, up to hit Emma Street, instead of coming over to 265, I mean, to Bedford Coach. My question is, do we, do we want to take that completely off, or have some connection from here to go north to? You can't see it on that. But that's the, I think that's the 90% plan, and that's what it's going to be.
It seems to me that it probably should go north and east right there.
Well, that's kind of what I thought, too.
Because there's a walk-in here that's not connected to the north.
And once you get across the bridge, because you've got to cross the creek here anyway, if you could bring something to come down and tie it in somewhere over here, where you don't have to cross it again, that gives you that north and north-south exit, so my recommendation is we add this to it, but we don't take the other piece off.
Agreed.
Okay.
Take a lot of traffic off that one intersection.
Well, and, you know, the intersection at 265 and Ford needs a lot of work, and there's some major utility relocations and stuff that needs to be done there, so, okay, so that's one we'll make a change on it. The other one is, this is the Maple Street overpass, this is Holcombe Street, comes across the railroad track right here, comes in over, and then it curves down and ties into Success Street. I don't have a drawing that showed it all together, I think this is confusing. We have already purchased these buildings right here, and they're getting ready to come down. This is getting ready to be bid out, I think the bid out meeting is in about two or three weeks, I don't know, I don't keep track of all that stuff. But that gives us that connection, since the Meadow Street crossing is closed, this will be the new crossing over the railroad track, and then ties into Success Street up here on this side.
Much better place, because people were already using it as a crossing, and that is dangerous.
Dangerous.
Because trains were being parked there.
Yeah. There, there's another place that I think is a little bit further north than where this actual crossing is, that they were crossing up here by the fire station rather than, or down there by the creek, or anyway, but this puts it right next to the old post office, I mean, it just barely fits in there.
Taller is it?
It just barely fits. But that gives us that, so that would be the other one.
With a trail included.
With a trail, with it, uh-huh. Well, it'll have a 12-foot on the north side, and then when you get across the railroad track, it's the property that belongs to the housing authority, the sidewalk will be on that side. This is 64th Street from 412 to Watkins, and it is being widened out with a, as a boulevard with a median, it'll have a roundabout at Apple Street, it doesn't have a roundabout at Watkins, and this, and it goes all the way down to, I think Watkins is right there, right, didn't that say Watkins right there?
I can't read it.
Can't either. It doesn't go all the way, it goes close to where Don Tyson Parkway would go through. This is really the, what we got back from the traffic study that Peters and Associates did about the whole southwest overlay district, the areas that need to be upgraded, that makes 64th Street a, a major collector, it makes Watkins a major, or a minor collector all the way across, and part of the bond program will be adding a pedestrian crossing over, onto that bridge that's there to get you all the way over to 48th Street.
And Watkins a minor, just because of its proximity to Don Tyson?
Yeah, I think so.
And the fact that you can get over the interstate right there, I think, I don't know, I would question that, shouldn't be up on the.
He did the traffic counts, and the traffic counts that they generated didn't show that it needs to be larger than a minor collector. I'd kind of ask that question, too, so, I don't know the traffic issue.
There's a lot of traffic counts going on, I mean, in the future.
Well, supposedly.
Once it grows.
Yeah. So we go back and look at the numbers.
I think we'd be looking at upgrading in the future, and it.
What is being built, is being built to, you know, it's going to have, well, it has two lanes on each side with a, with a median from Watkins to, I mean, from 64th to Jean George, and it doesn't have a center turn lane from Jean George over the inner, because all it has is the hospital on that one side.
The circles on 60th, does that represent a roundabout, or does that represent?
That's what's, he's recommending a roundabout at 64th and Watkins, but that's not what's being designed.
What about Apple Road?
It is being designed with a roundabout. This is, this is the location of, of George Family, a part of the complex, this don't even.
The reason why I'm bringing that up is, is that, I know we talked about this before, as far as 60th going straight north into 412, that, you're probably not going to put out a light there.
Well, we're looking at a traffic signal at this location.
Well, if you're going to put a roundabout, you're going to end up probably having people that'll go on Apple, and go up as far as if they want to be able to go straight across or even turn left on, on 412, they're going to go with that.
Yeah, where that line is.
Yeah, because if you put two lights that close, you're going to have the same situation that Fayetteville has.
Well, basically, it's 56th Street to 64th Street is almost a mile, and it's a mile between them there. And then you don't have, and then you have one at Jones Road, now, what we won't have is one at Foundry Park.
It'll be seeing that between 4:30 and 6 o'clock in the evenings, and so, I mean.
Part of the discussion with the 64th Street project was whether or not we do this portion into Harbor Meadows and extend that on into here. The traffic counts that it generates wasn't enough to warrant it being put on as a, as a bond project, and so if that happens, it will be the developers who are doing that will have to pay that cost, that's not something the city's going to put in.
I'm just questioning, do you really want to take 60th Street all the way up?
Well, I can tell you that's what's happening.
What's up there now?
64th Street, well, it, it's there now.
60th or whatever it is.
64th Street ends right here, right now.
Okay, okay.
And it will have a signal here now.
Okay.
What you don't have is Jones Road doesn't go this direction. It's, it does, and this is the property that came out of, of Towne Towne, it came into Springdale, that, sorry, I'm not used to doing this where it clicks so easily.
But the purple, major collector, and.
The green is the minor collectors.
So the difference between the two being?
Major collectors are usually four lanes, minor collectors can be three, can be four without a median. 112, you know, is being studied by the highway department to be widened down, the first access management plan will be from 412 all the way up to 612. But that's what the traffic study from Peters and Associates was recommending for changes to that overlay district street. And what it changes is, right now, the master street plan shows Jones Road coming down and tying over in here to Watkins like this, and really, we're bringing it down to George Avenue and not bringing it to tie into this location right here. These kind of things will depend on what happens to the final design of Eagle Road.
Is there any studies being done as far as 49 and 412 to potentially have something like Walmette up in Rogers, it's actually under construction right now?
I don't know what you mean.
It's getting spooned.
Oh, no.
It's getting the crosshovers underneath.
The, all of the interstate intersection studies for 49, nothing was, was ever proposed for, and the Sunset one, because the 612 bypass is supposed to take all the traffic off of it, and it wouldn't need it when that's completed. And so there are no, there are no changes identified for it at all in the interstate set.
So I think that we're making a mistake by not putting one more east-west major collector.
Apple Road, you mean.
All the way up to.
Either Apple or Watkins, but you're going to have.
Well, see, Watkins goes all the way out.
But it's a minor collector.
It's a minor collector.
And with the traffic, and what's going to go in there, and I think it's going to go, when it starts, it's going to go pretty quick, we would be wiser, I think, to put our street plan.
Don Tyson Parkway will go all the way out, it is the one that we have federal dollars to do the design work, and we're working on that for construction, it'll go all the way through. I can tell you that Apple didn't go across because the developer who owns this piece of property is looking at some major development that's going to fit right in here, but it's not conducive to a road to go through.
Right, and so that major development, people are going to be trying to get out, and you have, if you look at how we have spaced those major collectors, I think we're going to be very quickly revising, and if we put it in the plan now, and then when they fix the street, they've got to, if they develop it, they've got to do it to where the final is. Am I wrong?
Let me show you, let me show you the traffic study that we got as part of this.
Are there not pieces that sit to the east of 112 that are in Towne Towne?
Yeah, there are pieces.
And, and a lot of them, are there not? It's not just one.
There are a few, yes.
There are a few. Let me go to that. We have the traffic study for that. Does he read it? Probably not, you can see that, tells you what he's supposed to do. And when you get down to the traffic volumes, which they're giving us all these traffic volumes for, there's a lot of discussion that we'll be doing too.
And, I mean, I understand the volumes aren't there today, but.
Well, he did projected volumes as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I can tell you, I know, I know we made some assumptions about landies, they divided it up into sub-areas, and we made some assumptions about landies based on what we knew is being discussed by the landowners. And keep in mind, most of that land is owned by one big developer. Okay? And if you want to see all this, I got a copy, you can compare, but what I'm getting at, too, is the maps that show the, the traffic volumes.
So, so when they did the study, it?
This is their projected.
At complete?
Full shot.
Okay.
Two-way traffic volumes.
Project?
Yeah, average daily two-way traffic, so you see 12,000 along.
Yeah.
Here, which is a little bit, those numbers, are, are those numbers hard for you guys to see?
Yeah, we can read it.
Okay. And based on what we saw landies-wise, that's where you see the lesser volumes of these that are going back and forth, because this is designed for everything to get to these two major streets, to go north and south, and to come down to.
So, so when they do that projection, is it based on just what's in there?
No, they look at, and we talk about what we think the density, this area I know is being looked at as single-family large estate type lots, this whole area right here. This area is looked for higher density, like, like we have here, could go as far as this, most of the rest of this is going to be commercial type development, you might see some mixed development up in this area, but that's, that's what's different about this one is large tractors.
Up.
Yeah. That's the, that's the difference.
And I guess my question is, are they accounting for cut-through traffic that's coming down 112 and that's trying to get to the other side of Watkins?
True.
Because there's people that are not going.
That's going to be a weakness.
They're not going there right now, but they're going to be.
That's not something that he's putting to.
No, this is based on.
And that's what I think is going to happen, is you've got people that are going to go to Bentonville on 112, and they're going to come down and cut through Watkins.
But are they going to come down and hit Don Tyson Parkway if you want to get to 71 or across? Would you, you would be better off to do that.
Correct.
And that encourages those to go to that.
But if you live in that section, it's kind of.
If you live in southwest, right, you're going to take Watkins to avoid the jam at 412 and the jam, it's going to be.
That's probably.
And if you pull those up, I think you're going to bump it up, and then we're going to build it for too small, and then have to turn around and add.
I agree, Watkins is going to do what Emma's supposed to do.
Taking local traffic off of the.
Get your local traffic across and get it out of those lanes.
And so we need to prepare for those people, have it ready, because I think you're going to find a lot more people, and if you don't, Tyson is just going to be swamped, it's going to be like 71 right now.
Okay, with, with minor collector from here to 48th Street, you're going across, there's limited access point, four lanes of traffic will move that without a median.
Yeah, I, once you're, once you have no left turns.
Yeah.
Where the bridge is, I think you're fine, but everything west of, of the hospital.
Well, here we're building it four lanes with a boulevard down the middle.
Then you cut the boulevard out wherever you want, turn it there.
It's already, the cuts are already made, there are no more cuts, there's a cut for the ballpark, there's two for the ballpark, there's one for In-Wac, and that's it. And then George's is designed on the other side to mirror those same cuts.
That'll be the same for every one.
Yeah, right. Access management works as well, and if we use access management on 2, on 64th Street, we can control the same kind of thing.
So what you were saying is, is minor collector from 112 all the way over to Jean George, a major collector of Watkins, from 112 to Jean George?
Right, and technically, I guess it is being built as a major collector.
It is.
Okay, finally, it came through, I got it, I got it.
Because you already.
Okay, sorry.
Around our rest of all by.
Sorry, I lost it, major collector.
Because everything we built there, we built to expand it to four lanes.
Yeah.
We've just left the shoulder, north and south side.
Well, now you can go out there, it's all built out from.
Well, that was before Don Tyson hadn't made a change on it, so it was a different world, and I still think.
The whole world is different back there, yes. And then we will be extending it with the 64th project all the way down here. This final connection will be made with when Don Tyson is extended, on, as part of that project, not part of the 64th Street project. So you'll come down here and need to have to take this little runaround to get to it until this portion is done. It should go to construction within the next two, three years, maybe, I don't know. It's not designed with a parallel road along here. Now, I think when we see the property around Sam's, you know, there's, there's a road that comes around through to Sam's and tie in here that allows for development on both sides of the road here, but it doesn't actually parallel like a, a parallel access road along 49 there. I think we will see some changes in this, depending on how this develops, because there's some strong commercial stuff being looked at this corner that may, but we need to restrict access to 412. I mean, it needs to not be any more than it's already there. If you want to get to 412, you can go right in, right out, or you got to go around and come to the other side of.
Right there.
I know. Looks really good up there. So the business says, I got to have two ways in there. We all know how that works.
So we, I'm going terrible as far as street names and things like that, so coming south from the Elm Springs Supercenter, is that a minor collector through that whole thing, or is that considered major, or is there any improvements that we would want to do?
48th Street, you mean, coming through there now, there's not any changes proposed for any of that, no. 56th.
We think that 56th Street will take all of that traffic, even though all of that is going to zoning of commercial down through there on 48.
That's the theory.
Well, I think the reality is, if you did it front of the road, you couldn't have a light on 412 or Don Tyson anyway.
It doesn't, it doesn't accomplish.
So all you're going to do is take the traffic and follow it north-south and back to 56th Street to finally get on one of the state highways, or 412.
Okay, let's get over here and look at this. So see, right now, 48th Street comes in, in my opinion, sometime in the future, we need a flyover that makes 48th Street go back across like it used to. This is the location that needs a flyover really bad.
You're at the right spot there, yeah. Care for more?
No, that's good.
This is, this is Sunset.
412.
This is 412, and this is 48th Street, and so you go straight across over here to go all the way over.
You're talking about that 48?
Yeah.
Yeah. Flyover here. The flyover will be here.
It's a major collector till the new Mercy Hospital, and then after that, it goes down to three.
It's three lanes, yeah.
How long do they fly over to that?
Well, otherwise, if you want to go north and south, you don't have to go to, oh, wait, I had a 56 to go across, so you can come back at 48. 56, in my opinion, is going to be overcrowded.
You can't get on or off 412 right there, 48, if you, if you made that connection. I know there's a light there, but that light's probably not long-lived.
Probably not, yeah. I don't know, I don't know. This flyover is very important, right here, the one that's being designed, whether it goes from here to here, that's what's being designed right now, this piece is, in my opinion, a fairly easy piece to get all the way to Goodson, so that we have that connection right here.
Did put a flyover on 48, and took away the ability to get, get on 49, or 40, in the interstate there, and make everybody go here, 56 Street, or on around, you're going to take a ton of traffic right there, go away from that, and bring it back around this way, because you're not.
So that we have that connection right here.
Did put a flyover on 48 and took away the ability to get on 49th, or 40th, in the interstate there. And make everybody go here, 56th Street, or on around. You're gonna take a ton of traffic right there. Go away from that and bring it back around this way, cause you're not...
Yeah.
That is really a bad place for those good traffic signs.
Yeah, I'm just calling it out too because why I think the whole thing should be a major collector through there is, is that we're seeing that it's going commercial all the way through there. And you really can't help appeal to a commercial without having that major collector.
I know that when you run the model and you put 56th Street all the way up through here to, at least now to County Line Road, when you put that in there, or at least to Elm Springs Road, the traffic volume on this comes down. Because it is assumed that people are gonna come over here and come down, miss all this stuff and not have to go through anything, anything here.
You're defeating what I'm saying in there is the fact that all of that is going commercial through there and 48. So if that develops the way it should, it should naturally grow its traffic through there because of that being some destinations in that whole piece of it.
But it's got three lanes already, and again, if we do access management where you don't get a driveway every 70 feet and we're adding, you know, like this one that goes into Sam's Furniture here, we have one up here, we control how you go in and out. It may function fine with three lanes. I don't know. I think it's just a minor, but we can go back and look at that one too. Put that one back in the model. Right now, 56th Street is being designed and bid to Elm Springs Road. The next phase, as the mayor indicated just the other day, up to County Line Road. And then County Line Road is being extended. No, that's County Line Road right there. When you get to this portion on down here, it's gonna be really tough and it's probably gonna have to go around. The master street plan shows it going all the way up here with an interchange up in this area on the 612 bypass because that's the spacing it's gonna take to get another one in there.
So Wagon Wheel is state highway, we wouldn't have anything as worse defining that, right?
Wagon Wheel is not a state highway on this side.
Okay.
It's a, it's a major collector.
The two-lane road going across Interstate 49 is a debacle.
But that's, that's not, the interstate, I mean, the state highway only picks up on it.
The other, the...
That's my question, is that state highway right there, or do we have responsibility for that?
It's on the east side of 71, it's a state highway.
It's a state highway from, they have control from here to there because it's part of the 49 interchange.
Interchange, okay.
And the interstate study, interchange studies, this was when they didn't propose a lot of changes to either. Because of the quarry. Because again, 612 is designed to take all that extra traffic off of, which only works if you go all the way over and get it to at least 265, in my opinion. You haven't done anything for these places. You know, getting it to 71, with Dixie Land coming through here, will take some of the traffic off that, but we need to get it all the way over to 265. So that that traffic has someplace on, but it's, I know it's terrible right here, right now. Now, if we could get 56th Street, one theory is to take it, the next phase would be from here and connect it to Wagon Wheel. You come around this way and go to these interchanges already there. I think that makes it worse than that.
Makes it worse.
What needs to happen is start working on getting a interchange up here on 412, on 612, so that you can come up here and get off and come straight and not have to go back through this. Now, this'll take it up, regressive decision all the way to Washington to get that one done.
So this is where...
It's another break, it's just like Don Tyson interchange was, it's a break in the access and you gotta go through that.
This is where the Northwest Corridor, next year on the Master Land Use Plan, we need to be really intentional about this area.
Once you build these roads, it's gonna explode.
Well, having the appropriate land use plan will help us for defining.
And you gotta get, you gotta get facilities, you gotta get infrastructure to it. You know, and that's a little bit, a little bit weak still. Infrastructure that's going down. There will be sure improvements and stuff that goes along with 56th Street, so don't sit in on all those meetings. I don't know that for a fact, I would just say that's what we do.
Sorry, I keep jumping around a little bit. So the new school that has been named, the elementary school, Tonton area. Is there anything within our area that we'd want to make sure that they know?
I don't know, then I know exactly where it is.
Penaltal Road.
And I didn't, you know, Penaltal Road is the one that goes out to the new water tower, right? Which is way out here.
Yeah, it is way out there.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I did not, when I saw it in the newspaper, I didn't think it was close enough that it had any impact on anything that we were doing.
I don't see how. The way I understand it was it's down towards Penaltal Road, that's quite a way.
It's quite a ways out there.
Quite a ways away, yes.
Yeah. And, but, you know, it makes this, I think the... What we do with 412 between here and 612, I think the access management plan is really as important as anything to make sure that traffic can move along this. Springdale, Tonton, Elm Springs isn't really signed on yet, but Springland, Tonton has signed on to the idea of this having access management. Part of the question with Elm Springs is where's the road actually gonna go? Is it gonna stay on its current alignment, and if it does, do you gonna wipe out things in this area? Is it going around this direction further to the west? And what does that do? And I don't know that any of those decisions has been made yet. You know, Tonton's got a big, huge project going in right here. It says, the sign says storage units, sure, the whole thing's not just storage units. I don't know, I haven't seen it. Okay, so back to the master street plan. Are there any other areas that, the ones we just talked about, cause I think that's all on the list? Highway 112 will put it on there, Don Tyson Parkway West, the new Jean George Boulevard coming south. You know that it will come and angle to the east and tie in right here. It'll come like this and angle in that direction. It doesn't come down here, straight down where it is now, where the existing road ends right here. It's not gonna end there anymore. And you guys probably can figure out why. And this'll come down and angle this direction and tie in over here. The face that's being developed now will come down to a roundabout somewhere around in here that ties New Hope Road back into it. I guess that's New Hope Road right there, isn't it?
Yes, they will.
Yeah. Cause we're gonna tie in, it will tie in right here, it's gonna tie in right there. I was too far down, sorry.
I was gonna say, I don't think it's going through the blessing.
No, it's not going through the blessing. Oh, no, it's not going in front of Joe's house and it's not going through the blessing, it's gonna end right down here. But there'll be a roundabout right in here. And that's the next phase of Don Tyson or Jean George South will be from here down to this roundabout so that you can make that connection there.
And then it's gonna go over next to the interchange.
It's gotta go where this direction is.
Yeah. Can we not learn from putting signals next to the interchange? Okay, I won't say anything. I know why, but really.
Well, to me, there is a compromise in between putting it way over here and putting it right here, that it could work somewhere in here and at least give you enough space to...
That's quite a good route.
We do have this, you know, that's gonna buy highlands that'll create that access running back out to Jean George and that will be the only break, there'll be no other breaks in the access except for that road that's coming up there. You look like you have a question or comment?
I have two questions. Again, I'm jumping around. Dixie Land?
Dixie Land? The property that was in Bethel Heights between, uh... Right in here, has come out of Bethel Heights and into Springdale. The design will come across right down through here. And I think it comes pretty much straight down through here. We're working with the highway department on how it gets underneath the 612 bypass when it comes across through here. Part of the idea is to be able to come back and be able to get on to 612 here. Because we're not, as I understand it, they're not really looking at doing the 71 interchange right away. So could this be built to this point where you can come down and hit 264 and take trucks out of that way? That's one of the discussions that's being had with the highway department right now. A lot of this depends, how much they build depends on whether or not the asset sales tax gets extended or not.
The question I have, is that a major collector or even greater than that?
It's a major collector.
So four lanes that center term line on that? Does, does the bike trail come through there and get rerouted?
I don't know, no. I don't know if it gets a boulevard style, a boulevard type of, I haven't seen any plans for it, I don't think it is. The Greenway doesn't get rerouted to come through there. It can have a trail, it will have a side path, it will have a 12-foot side path on the west side. But the Greenway doesn't get rerouted. The Greenway will always be where the Greenway is, but it will have alternates around that people will probably use rather than the section that's being used that was done now, unlikely. The traffic up in here is terrible too. With Hunt letting out, you know, they've got, I mean, it's, this portion really needs to be done soon. They just opened their new tower over here, but if you go up there and look, this cut for here is, it's coming along really, really fast.
So timing wise, we're probably gonna meet same timeframes or?
Uh, they're gonna open this portion because this final design is not done yet. We had to wait till the Blevins property came out because the mayor's position was we were not building that street in Bethel Heights. Until that property came out of Bethel Heights, it wasn't going to happen. And Bethel Heights said, no, they wouldn't release it, so they had to wait the extra 90 days and go through all that. They still appealing it in court. It'll be in court for a while unless this whole thing...
My other, I have a question or more of a comment or suggestion. In the areas that become what I would call the entries to Springdale, did we have anything that we're looking at as a city as far as beautification projects that really come out as far as welcome to Springdale type of piece in some of these major locations on that? I think other cities have done a better job as far as doing that. And is that something that we would add to this as a...
I can tell you it's not being designed in now, I don't know that it's being considered. Are you talking about more than just wayfinding signs? You know, Bentonville and Rogers and Fayetteville have done quite a bit with just entry.
Putting some effort to some beautification initiatives where they become maintained areas that can establish a, here's what the city is doing as far as their beautification. This is what we're expecting to have as far as if you come in and you develop in there. The city's invested in that, you'd expect some of the same thing.
As far as I know, nothing like that is being done.
We were talking about that before you got in here. Other areas.
We were talking about the area down by the railroad track, the overpass.
We've got a very large sign that says, welcome to Springdale. And then you go underneath the railroad on 71. And it's just that medium that's out there, it's concrete and weeds and other things.
It just screams welcoming out there.
It just, I don't know what it screams, but we talked about how that's in the highway department.
It's a state highway, you know.
Be nice to do something with that.
One of the things they're gonna want us to do is take over.
Can we add it to the master street plan in order to drive some discussion associated with it?
Adding an element about entryway.
Or am I totally off base on this, so?
Not sure.
I think it's a good idea, I just don't think it's related to the master street.
That's what I was gonna say.
I think that's more of a chamber of commerce.
It's a beautification plan for the city rather than a master street plan.
But why is it the chamber? The chamber wouldn't necessarily fund it.
Well, I mean, what we have now in the interchanges are private or companies who have agreed to take over the maintenance of the lines.
Yeah, but the city does it.
The city does not.
The city actually does the work, contracts it out, have it done.
Why through the chamber? Because the chamber, I think, needs to demand it or request it vehemently. And then when the council says, yes, we should spend money on this, then it'll happen.
I'm not gonna argue with you, but I can tell you, I don't think the master street plan is the place to do it.
It's not, I'm, I guess I'm asking for...
Guidance on what else? You know, when these signs will put up...
I don't want it to just be a thought, I think it's something that really needs to be seriously looked at because other cities are doing a better job with it. And not just in Northwest Arkansas, I can go to other cities that...
We have nothing on the east side. When you come into Springdale, you don't know you're there till you're older. There's no welcome sign at all. This sign down here needs to be moved because the entrance into Springdale now needs to be down here in this area, not when you get to the overpass. I mean, at least Don Tyson...
That'd be a conversation we could have with Brad or somebody like that in the city.
Yeah, could be a place to have a conversation. But all the gateways, you know, the wayfinding packages, gateways, gateway signage, gateway, I don't know, does Bentonville do landscaping with their gateway signs? I know there is a whole, in the wayfinding package for the whole region, there are gateway signs so that when you go into the region, you know where you're going into a certain city. We don't have any of those.
Yeah, the airport just installed a common sign and you see everywhere else.
And I don't know if landscaping alone can be part of the master street plan, you know, like if we're doing boulevards, when we do a boulevard or a parkway that has a median, is there a standard for what kind of landscaping needs to go in that?
Well, in Bentonville, it's in their master tree plan.
Master tree plan?
Yes. Just where are those trees that are planted?
Yeah, rather than the master street plan, it goes into a master.
That's a good way to approach it too. Because you really want trees and more than just a median, you want a whole. And so that's why it's in the tree plan by itself.
Which we don't have a tree plan.
We don't have a plan for you to work on.
I think that's, I think that's a new thing, surely.
I like the idea, Kevin, I think we ought to pursue it if we can. If not part of the street plan, at least to keep talking about it would...
Well, and maybe the master street plan just needs to make a comment about, the street network needs to have, I'll see if I can work some kind of link into that way as a policy.
Kind of a recommendation.
Yeah, kind of as a policy or objective to create our major entrances into the city.
I would just ask a fundamental question, who uses the master street plan?
Well, we use a master street plan every time a development comes in to tell them what kind of street purpose they have to do. Master street plan is used to develop, in theory, have some improvement programs and lot programs.
And how could a master street plan be used?
How could it be used? Well, like that, I mean, that's its major purpose, is to establish a transportation system that as development occurs, you either obtain a right of way for it for sure or you get part of the streets built as development occurs. And that's what we've been doing for years. Look at 56th Street or Jean George, that subdivision where it's going through the middle of that subdivision, the right of way was dedicated with that subdivision, we didn't buy any of that. Even though those people thought it was gonna be a park, it wasn't.
And I'm just asking the questions on, I think we have opportunities to redefine how certain things are used. And I'm not saying that the gateway piece is a master street plan. The fact that we don't have a master tree plan or anything like that. They all represent guidance in how the approach should be associated with things. Which to me, that should be a tool for those that are interested in potentially investing in the area. The dealer says as far as tools, as far as how they can make their decisions. I don't know that they're really using it for that piece of that versus more of a regulation piece on it, so... Not to answer today, I think it's just some things that we need to just continue to think about of how do we use these going forward. A good example of that is, is that we've had a tremendous amount of conversation about the connectivity and the bikeability of the city. We're really wanting to story point that and use that as a guidepost associated with it. How's that any different than some of the other things in here, so?
Well, I know industrial wise, one of the things that people are given is the information in the transportation system. How do you get trucks in and out? Is there a road there? What kind of utilities are there? So the master street plan pays...
Yeah, there's the obvious standard things, but I think there's an opportunity to probably reinvent and how it can be leveraged a bit more yet, so... And I call those out because I think we have an opportunity to where this can be more impactful when we review these every other year in that whole piece.
An education of what the tool is really for always is important.
I think that's why we're kinda struggling to get through it.
Okay, those are the major areas that we've talked about. Does anybody have, well, intersections, you know, we have some intersection design issues. I always look at, are there intersections that we could do intersection improvements that would make a major impact on traffic congestion? that would make a major impact on traffic congestion without having to spend a lot of money doing major road updates? And that's, that's something we kind of look at some, too, is in how we do. You know, right now, we're looking at putting roundabouts every time we run. I fully do not totally sell on roundabouts, but they seem to be the going thing.
I ran into a lady yesterday coming from the airport who was going backwards on the roundabout. That's the first time I've seen that. We had to stop her until she turned around.
That's the plan, Bentonville, the Bentonville community plan. That's where everything you've just talked about is in that.
Yeah. It used to be called a community facilities plan, that's what it used to be called.
It is separate from the street. This is, this is more typically more of a regulation document about plan acquisition.
Yeah.
But that's where you get to put in the more squishy stuff.
Thank you, I gotta go. Good. Thank you.
That's all I got. Yes, that would...
This is, this is pretty much what I have for tonight. The game plan is to have a draft ready for the next work session so we can have the public hearing in November. And I'll have all my stuff done. I don't know what we'll get from engineering, but I'll have the updates to the map that we talked about. The policies, the procedures, all that kind of stuff we need to look at. And they're going to go back over and look over the volumes and the information that's on the chart on the back to see what else needs to be updated because there were some changes that we, that we need to make that we've already identified some of those. And so I'm trying to get all those together, too, within the next month so we can move that forward. But at least these are the changes that we will actually make to the, to the map itself. As development occurs, we'll at least have those on there.
Well, thank you for going through this. That's good.
I always think, I must be missing something because there's not very many. But maybe it's...
Try to get the review and everything.
Well, or a pardon. Are they going to put anything, is it in that intersection with 48? Are they going to do anything there?
Right here, I have not seen, but I'm sure it will have to have something left to it. Right there, yeah. It will have to have something done here. And I think it will have to have something done on, on the 40th Street side, too.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if there's any discussions about putting roundabouts in those locations. I don't know as far as long to get that yet. I know they've did a lot of survey stuff, they closed the interstate. One lane of the interstate there last week to do some soil tests in the middle and all that kind of stuff. I don't know beyond that, how this has got done yet.
If you can't, this is going to be, but if you put that, you have a proven technical school record in the software.
It's going to make a big difference as far as that. It's kind of swarming down through there. You know, it's pretty close to, so there's some extra design challenges. It's going to go with that, with that project to go over it, too.
But you can't do that without making modifications in small town.
Yeah, yeah. This, from about right here to right there, it's pretty swampy and that, that takes some extra... To me, it looks to me like if you have a bridge, are you going to get down and take it? That's my question. Or even on this side, it's even shorter once, it may be pretty equal, but it's pretty short to go over there and come down in time to, to be able to do something with those locations.
Well, now central is, is more...
You're right, I think both sides are...
Yeah, yeah, because it's, it's, I think we're going to speak. We know what the impact Don Tyson Parkway had on travel. I think this one should have as much impact on traveling in Springdale as Don Tyson Parkway did. When you can go across town and not have to go through any of those interchanges. It's a big deal.
And they're using it to lie across the 40th.
Crazy, crazy. It's a super road that not a lot of people use.
No, and it'll be a boon to arson, the citizens. It'll take away the cut through.
It's a project that really benefits, I think, the citizens of Springdale better than anything we've done.
Well, and I think that's what Watkins will do is...
Yeah.
I agree.
With all that, there will be people, but they will live in that area. If you're living beyond, you're going to take Tyson, but it'll take, it'll take traffic off of Tyson.
I don't think it'll take as much, I don't think it'll have as big of impact on travel in Springdale just to put a pedestrian, because we're not letting the road out.
It's been three-lane through there.
We're putting a pedestrian bridge on there. They're not doing anything to the existing road over at Watkins. But they're adding a pedestrian bridge on it.
But does it go right now? Right now, it's, it doesn't go all the way to 112?
It doesn't what? Go to... It goes all the way over to 40th Street. And that's as far as it goes.
Right. And on the other side, it's already...
It will go all the way to 412.
Right, so, so right now, it does not go all the way to 412. But when it does, people who normally would take Tyson that live in that area, they're going to come down there. And if there's businesses, they may stop and pick something up and then continue home, which is going to lessen some of the traffic on Tyson.
We looked at a long time ago continuing Watkins all the way through to come all the way over to 71. It just gets really close to Fox House. If you're interested, if you're interested, you like that idea very much. And it cuts through, I mean, you know, you could extend it all the way across over here to you know, this, you got to Cambridge, that's Cambridge right near.
Yeah.
I mean, you could get to Johnson Road. Getting to Johnson Road would help dissipate some of that traffic if you got that far. And it's, it's fairly out, it really doesn't go through his house, but it goes right next to his house.
But if you don't do both of them...
That would actually, you know, as you get infill, that really would be nice to have.
Yeah, this is, this is Cambridge and this is Arapahoe that goes on out. There's a lot here, yeah.
And if you're going to do that now, it's time to do it.
We say that all of this area to infill, but Tyson's owns most of this right here. And the Georges own most of that. Is it going to fill? And I tell people infilling cities work except in areas where you've got people who own large tracks that they're not... I mean, this is Jane's house. Johnny was very upset when we put Don Tyson Parkway through down here because it was too close to her house then. What are we going to do if we go something right through here?
Gary's house.
So actually, one other one.
Yeah, this is Gary, Gary's house. There's nothing that goes over there. You know, we had one here where we would take Robinson straight on through and connect it and come across this way. That got shot down really quick. Really, really quick. Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So from Elm Springs, is it 40th?
40th North to Wagon Hill.
Yeah, 40th North to Wagon Hill.
What you're saying, showing on the master street plan, yeah.
They're, we're going to, they're already going to do the route up to the...
I think it's a, let me see, I'm just going to be guessing.
Recommendation would be that be a major?
Long time, yeah.
I have to the master street plan, there is, what does it say? Modern foot driveway.
My, my comment is, is recommendation for that to be a major.
Okay, I can tell you already it's being designed not to be a major plan.
But the section between Elm Springs Road and 412 was all designed to be five lanes. All storms were set back, ready to expand five lanes. Okay, so why is it not being five lanes now?
And they're going to purged it up to the...
Is it, I mean, is it a five?
Question, you ask really hard questions that I can't answer.
Just another one to look at, potentially.
We can always make three-lane road into five, that's not...
Yeah, that's true.
Right.
We should probably make that a rule.
Three-lane would be better than what it is, right?
Three, three lanes are what we're getting there. Three lanes is what we're getting there. We are not buying enough right of way to be five, I can tell you that right now, too.
No, that's short, that.
Rogers, Rogers turn 71, over 71, from two-lane into five-lane road. Just get repainted.
You must remember one more time. We haven't had a lot of involvement in these kind of things that'll last two, three years on the house. It's getting designed.
Well, good, you want to tell us you can't make that perfect?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, make a note.
Yeah, exactly.
But now, I think it's cheaper.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I think there are things.
I'm not arguing with you.
Does Game Fish connect to Pineapple Tree? Does it go to the coast?
They will have their emergency access off of that. It will not be a...
Can you make that a trail?
Um, they...
Because that sure would be convenient to get to the trail system.
I think there is, I think there is a trail access to there, through the, through the design, but it's not...
It's off 40th Street, though, right? It's, it's a continuation.
The 40th Street one, the major one will be across through there. They have internal connections all the way through that that will connect to the the main trail going up to it from there. And I think there is one off of that. But they wanted to make sure that there was not a a major entrance into the park on that side because they couldn't control it. So it is an emergency access only.
There'd be no cars, just bicycles.
Yeah. No cars. But I think it'll, it'll have a surface that a fire truck can drive on, I don't know what's on the strip. I don't know, I have to go back and find that one, what that one is on there. We did apply for a grant from the Walton Family Foundation to do that piece across the water, the Game Fish Commission part of it. The portion from 40th Street to Thunder Chicken has been financed through the city's public works budget.
Oh.
And then we applied for two and a half million dollars for the Phase 3 of Dean's Trail. And we got a half million dollar state R.D.O. grant for that already. We have two R.D.O. grants for the tunnel. So we're about to get enough money put together to finish those up. Assuming that all, everything we applied for comes through. We should be able to do the Spring Creek Trail before summer, by the end of summer next year. At least the portion across the Game Fish Commission part of it by the time they open. The rest of the connection by the end of the year. And then finish up Dean's Trail down to the animal shelter by the end of 2022.
What's their grant ever going to be? They're coming along.
Sometime next June or July is what they're shooting for.
You can definitely see it coming along.
Yeah, they've got a lot of building out, they really do, in surprise. I heard this morning that Highlands Oncology wants to be in it by January. I just don't see how that's possible because they don't have the...
They're going to finish.
Yeah, just, yeah. They told me that this morning. I said, man, when I talked to Dr. Brett for the last time, I told him, get in by June, we'll be doing it.
See, Mercy's grant opens the 28th, right?
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow.
Yeah, the blessing in the, remember, kind of was this afternoon, you know, 64 treatment rooms. Community facility, Jordan does.
So let me ask one question. On the road that we were talking about going through and connecting with Cambridge, that's not there right now. Someday, some of that could be split, correct? So is that not something that you would want to have a plan for and not necessarily put into play? But the day that the, if and when those properties are divided, have the plan in there already?
The theory is, yeah, you should be able to do that.
I don't think the plan needs to be...
The reality is, when most people say, no, that ain't going to happen.
It's not going to...
And quite honestly, you got to get something in that you get the majority of everything you want that you know you can improve.
Right, right. Well, I just think that if we don't put it in, then we need to really be watching that and watching what's happening because we could easily miss the opportunity when it comes someday, especially if it comes
Yeah, I agree.
in an off year and then it gets subcut.
I had this one on here and I can tell you, it didn't take two weeks for the public to look at that one went away. I had this one on here and it went away at about the same time. So I'm, you're not going to see me put one on. I'm not tacking on that, though.
Okay, okay, well, I just, yeah, I mean, it's just something that we need to...
There's something you are just not doing, you know?
But we need to bring it up every time and be watching.
Every time or every, not maybe every two years, but every four, six years. If, if there's activity starts again, then you got to start talking about that kind of stuff. Yeah. I agree.
I have to run to the soccer.
Okay. I, I could talk about Marshall Street tonight, but I don't know, it's, it's a busy time of year.
Every day is a busy time.
There's some really good projects that's going to come in pretty quickly, so... We have four redones, reconditioned uses. A few things I have to look at this early in the week.
I suppose buttered biscuit.
Uh, they, as far as I'm concerned, and we're done with them because they worked out, I shared parking agreement with Buffalo Wild Wings and they are going to pace some more of that area and create the additional parking that they need. And the rest of it's just finished out.
And so much is staying there?
Is what, as far as I know, they're saying, I don't know.
But we did, we're trying to do business.
No, it's just, it's just a... Yeah, all we had to do with is a number of parking spaces.
Thank you for joining us.
Oh, thank you.